All right, it's two o'clock. I'm gonna start the meeting. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today's Thursday, March 21st, 2019. It is 2:00 PM. We're in the Alene Strain Community Room of Adal Student Center, which is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider an act on the posted agenda. The first item on the agenda is called Order, which I've just completed, and we'll ask Mr. Baker to ask the invocation.
Yes, sir. Please bow with me. Lord, we're very thankful for this season. We're thankful for this academic year and all the wonderful things you're doing for our college. Please protect our faculty and our staff and especially our students. Thank you for our board members. Please help them to redeem the time with their families and please be with them today and in the next few weeks. We thank you very much for all the great things you're doing for this institution. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I'll conduct, I'll lead us into the pledge of allegiance. Right here, Ryan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You're seated. Number two on the agenda is open forum. Ms. Worley?
We have none.
Thank you, ma'am. Number three is President's Report. President Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and a legislative update. Recognizations. I would like to begin by congratulating Weatherford College softball players Morgan Page and Kason Rosmussen for being named North Texas Junior College Athletic Conference Softball Players of the Week. Morgan and Kason, please stand so that you can be recognized. Morgan, a sophomore outfielder from Giddings, had an 8.33 batting average for the week with two doubles, a triple, a homerun, six RBIs against number 19th-ranked Indian Hills. In 11 innings pitched, Kason only allowed one earned run on seven hits with seven strikeouts and two walks. Congratulations, ladies, and thank you for representing the black and the gold. At this time, I would like to formally present to the Weatherford College Board of Trustees several articles. The first article is the former formal Resolution 503 from the Texas House of Representatives, authored by State Representative Phil King, honoring Weatherford College for being named the North Central Texas Workforce Solutions Educational Partner of the Year and for the WC sesquicentennial celebration. The second article is Formal Resolution 257 from the Texas Senate, authored by Senator Pat Fallon, for the same honors. The third article that I would like to present is a thank you letter from State Representative Drew Springer, excuse me, for the receipt of the Weatherford College Anniversary Book and the sesquicentennial pen. And finally, I am very proud to present to the board a trophy awarded by the Parker County, excuse me, the East Parker County Chamber of Commerce, naming Weatherford College as Large Business of the Year. Mr. President, it is my honor to present the board with these articles formally honoring Weatherford College.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Three music students recently made all-state band. Congratulations to Aiden Lewis, Wilson Baker, and James Karazozza for representing the black and gold so well. Dr. Scott Tarnovsky, professor of history and chair of the WC Social Science Department, recently held the inaugural interdisciplinary academic conference. The conference featured 39 professional presentations and was a huge success. WC has recently experienced two separate health student situations. Due to HIPAA and FERPA privacy concerns, I can't go into details. However, several of our WC students deserve recognition for assisting their fellow students during health situations that required medical assistance. WC students Jessica Pirella, Victor Castro, Mackenzie Williams, and Eric McGuire are all to be recognized for assisting their fellow students in need. They are shining examples of the caring culture that Weatherford College is known for. And last, but definitely not least, I would like to recognize Weatherford College donors, the Weatherford College Foundation, and Mr. Brent Baker and team for the exceptional giving that has recently occurred at Weatherford College. With 10 days remaining in the first quarter of 2019, the first quarter philanthropy has seen a 109% increase year-to-date over the first quarter of 2018. That is truly remarkable, a 109% increase. Please join me in giving Mr. Baker and team a round of applause. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Elizabeth Spear, the acquisitions librarian, has resigned with an effective date of April 1st, 2019. We thank Elizabeth for her service and wish her the very best in future endeavors. Legislative update. We are watching Senate Bill 2 and House Bill 2 very closely as they have the potential to reduce our property tax revenue streams from the current 8% rollback rate down to 2.5%. Given our student population growth, such a legislative change would make it very difficult for Weatherford College to even keep pace with inflation. We will keep you updated as the legislative session progresses. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, President Farmer.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yes, you can, sir.
At the, we played Temple in a softball game, and we were down 3 to 0 going into the last inning. And we hit a grand slam in the bottom of the last inning to beat the number 14 in the nation here at our campus. And those girls are, they're a pleasure to have, eat with me, and they're just so, they're so energetic sitting in the dugout, the clapping, the cheering. If you get a chance to go down there and watch a softball game, I think you'll be pleased with the representatives we have. And our baseball team is also doing well. I don't know their record right now, but I know they're doing really, our softball baseball are really doing well.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Okay, the consent agenda and financial reports. A, approval of minutes from February 14, 2019, board meeting. B, financial reports ending February 28, 2019. C, quarterly investment report. D, access control and video surveillance system, number RFP 0519. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and financial reports?
I say no.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Go to number five, consideration possible action, resolution to authorize an inter-local cooperation contract with National IPA. Dr. Cantrell?
This is another consortium group that we are able to buy off, which we're members of. I think that becomes more important all the time to us, that these have already been fed by this consortium. There is, I know, legislation down in Austin right now that would reduce the $50,000 that we normally have to come to you all for permission to purchase, down, back down to the $25,000. When they do that, it's gonna be much more labor-intensive unless we have more of these interlocal agreements to buy off of. Buying with this group, we would be purchasing participation in, let's see, I had that highlighted here, contracts for office supplies, furniture, and various solutions for facilities, food service, and technology. So at this time, we would recommend that we have, that you all would have passed a resolution authorizing the interlocal cooperation contract with the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance for participation in Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Programs. It's just one more interlocal that will help speed up the process here.
Are there any questions or comments about this agenda item? Is there a motion to authorize and approve item number five, resolution to authorize an interlocal cooperation contract with National IPA?
I say no.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number six, consideration possible action, adoption of 2019-20 tuition fees. Dr. Cantrell?
Larry's gonna assist me here, I think. We didn't really get time last month. We didn't have our recommendation ready. We were still reviewing. So I wanted to go a little bit more in depth right now on our past history on tuition and fees and where we think we're headed. Looking at this, first of all, we will look at our historical schedule of where we've been with tuition and rates for, since 2008. Percent of revenue by major source and the importance of the tuition and fees, state average comparison of tuition and fees, state ranking of tuition and fees for Weatherford College, and a little tuition and fees analysis, the 2019-20 tuition and fees recommendation, and then we'll have time for questions. If you look at this, we're looking at a proposed top line that we're recommending to you all today. It would take it from 2008, from $59 in district for tuition semester, per semester credit hour, to $89. That seems like a lot, but that's over 12 years when you look at it. Out of district would go from 85 in 2008 to 143 now. Out of state, 131 to 202 for out of state. Our non-resident, Wes County, Weatherford College, Wise County, would go from 85 to 110, and Granbury from $99 to 132. When we look at this, there are three major sources that we depend upon for our existence here, you might say. Dr. Farmer mentioned the House Bill 2 and Senate Bill 2. We're looking at tuition and fees in the middle here, the blue line, showing from 2008, or 2009-10 to 2018-19, showing that 34% of those three major sources comes from tuition and fees, which is, we have increased, but it's been rather static since 2008. Since 2008, we've had a different direction here at the college. We were trying very hard with the criticism from federal government to keep those tuition rates low. And so we did, raised it very little in that time. When you look at other college, when you look compared to the state average, 2018-19, in district is last fall, $92 compared to Weatherford College's $85. And what we're only proposing, we're increasing, we're recommending an increase of 5% in district, but we're only proposing going to $89 at this point in time, which is still under the average. We had for years before 2008 tried to stay with the state average, and as I'll show you later, we were at the state average in 2008 for in district. Right now, when you look at the ranking from fall 2018, we're ranked down at, well, it's 35, 36, and 37, so it's an average of those, but we're ranked right at 37 on the scale of the tuition and fee cost, according to the other 50 community colleges in the state. Basically, in district tuition in the fall 2008, Weatherford College in district tuition was at the state average at that time. Since that time, we've dropped $6 behind the state average. While average tuition costs have risen statewide since 2008 by 53%, Weatherford College has only risen by 44%. Weatherford College is proposing to increase in district tuition by $4 to $89, which is 5% versus last year's state average rate of $92 in an effort to return at least to state average. Out of district tuition in fall 2008, it was, we were lower then, was behind the state average by $4. While average out of district tuition costs have risen statewide by 64%, Weatherford College's out of district has risen by only 55%. Weatherford College is proposing to increase out of district tuition by $11, or 8% to $143 versus last year's state average of 149. Out of state, non-resident tuition, in the fall, we were very close to average there. We were at 131, they were at 132, but we've slipped there while average out of state tuition costs have risen statewide by 55%. Weatherford College has only risen 43%. Weatherford College is proposing to increase out of state tuition by $15, or 8% to $202 versus last year's state average of 209. In fall 2018, Weatherford College was ranked 37th, I mentioned before, of the 50 colleges in the state of Texas. We're looking at, as I will say, as I mentioned, that we're at 33 or 34% of the three main sources. Other community colleges in the state, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, every community college is different, and how those, some of them have very large, like Tarrant County has a very, very large tax base representing 64% of their three main sources. They're at 20%. San Jac for tuition and fees are at 40%. We're at 34 this current year. Wharton, Sue, I know you're familiar with Wharton, is at 59%. Clarendon, 56%. And Weatherford at 33. And this, this is in 2017, the data that I have here.
Do we have international rates?
Yes, that's a non-resident.
Okay.
It falls under that.
Okay.
Okay, this is our, this is our recommendation at this time, that we would, in district, $4 increase, out of district, $11 increase, out of district, Wise County, $6. Out of district, Education Center, Granbury, would be $10. Out of state, $15, as I mentioned before. Dual credit pilot program, no increase at this time. And tuition differential, we have, those differentials are for high-demand programs at this time. We've increased several of those by $20 more, raising those to a greater level, to help cover the cost of those programs. Continuing ed, distance ed, no changes.
She has a question.
Yes.
Go back to that for a minute. If we looked on that dual credit pilot program, now, if Ms. F. Wright was correct in my economics class here, it would, I mean, isn't that a very strong, a lot of people moving that way, supply to demand?
Well, the dual credit program, with our dual credit pilot program, I think they're referring to the Springtown. And that's the one that my-
Not related to our schools. How much does it cost a kid to take that at high school?
In district rates.
It's an in-district fee, just like anything else?
In district, normally, but Springtown, we have a special agreement for our special pilot program where we only charge them, is it the 20, well, it says here?
$30.
$30.
We also pay the faculty a greatly reduced rate. They also guarantee a minimum student enrollment per course and a certain distribution of faculty, embedded faculty, that means they provide people with master's degrees in their teaching faculty-
Yeah, they gotta have a master's degree, right.
-to us providing the faculty. And the combination of those things allows us to charge the students less to take the courses.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Continuing ed, no increases. Learning Resource Center, no increases this time. Testing Center, we have two, the ADN and AP test will go up $5. HSI, A2 testing fee will, at a cost of $55. Other miscellaneous charges, no other miscellaneous at this time, no student affairs. We do have no increase in any campus police, like parking fines or anything like that. Room and board charges, no increase at this time. But we do have some course fee changes that are, were coming in, a recommended chemistry, a $24 lab fee for chemistry 1406, HPRS 1209, $24 new fee. So there's several new fees that's listed there, which is not unusual. From time to time, we add additional lab fees or reduce at times and take away for classes that are killed. I'm gonna go back just a minute to the very beginning and talk about this mix a little bit more and the importance of it. Right here, when you're looking at the top line, that is property taxes. Right now, they're at 44% this current year. The bottom line, the green line, is your state appropriations. And if you'll notice, the decline in state appropriations, if I had gone back further than eight, it would've gone down tremendously. But we don't see a real, real hope that that's gonna raise very much either. We, we know if this House Bill 2 and Senate Bill 2 passes, that that top red line will stay static. So we will have no other choice but to try and keep that tuition rate up and to get at least to the average. We know now, it's what our drive is to get there. And so that's the importance of recommending these increases to you at this time. Are there questions?
Was it just my, I've thought that the House and the Senate had agreed to add funds to cover the loss, is, did I?
That's Senate Bill 3. She's referencing Senate Bill 2. Senate Bill 3 is where they're considering utilizing rainy day funds to bring the $5,000 pay raise to teachers. There's possible expansion of the sales tax base, not the rate, but the base associated with 3. But with 2, currently, there is no additional funding. It's simply a lowering of the rollback rate from 8% to the proposed 2.5%. I've heard through the grapevine that will likely increase probably somewhere to the 3 and 4 range. But I've heard nothing of any new additional dollars, and I concur with Dr. Cantrell's, that 44% red line, I, my view is that it's optimistic that it will remain flat. I suspect that it will go down, as will the green line with state funding, particularly when you look at it per pupil allocation.
Now, we do have lobbyists for community colleges.
Excellent.
Yes, we do.
This time.
Where do, where do Senator Fallon and Representative King stand on that 2.5% reduction?
They are supporters.
They're not interested in 3?
I've had some conversations with both of them and, very respectful conversations about the impact that that would have on not only community colleges, but, but many other institutions that rely on property taxes. And I think that those conversations are helping perhaps move that 2.5% upward, but I feel fairly strongly that they, the bill will pass in some form, and there will be a reduction from the current 8%. Where it lands, I have no idea, but I suspect it is very likely to pass, and it will likely fall somewhere between the 2.5 and the current 8%. Wherever it falls, it will diminish our capacity to raise additional tax revenue for property tax sources. And in a time of growth like we've seen, this, this could be quite challenging for us. So that's the importance of the tuition recommendations that Dr. Cantrell has so eloquently proposed today.
If you will recall back two years ago, when the summer session that they went into, it almost passed at that time, if they'd come back and vote at 4 and 5%. So if they would even get back to that, it would help, but.
Or raising tuition is not something that we want to do-
No.
...or like to do, or enjoy doing, but Weatherford College is on the brink of very, very exciting things. And I think if we're gonna have the funds to do the things that we wanna do, we have to find the revenue from that.
We've done everything possible over the last, since 2008, to keep that below, because before that, we were staying with the state average. But it was the desire that we would try to help the students with people, federal government, with criticism out there and how much tuition rates were going, but they're forcing into, that's the only other avenue we have, really.
What kind of revenue are we talking about on those increases?
It will all depend on where they end up percentage-wise. We've made some real gains in efficiency savings, and by doing some labor cost hiring freezes, we've, we've been able to capture a significant amount of capital that can be coupled with not only the modest tuition increases, which I would point out again, are well below state average. Also, we're looking at those tuition differentials, which are going to be imperative for us as we launch some of our technical programs, like the Bachelor of Science in Nursing and the Vet Tech Program, that we capture that funding to make sure that we adequately fund those programs and supply those. So I think, I'm, I'm not panicked, but we wanna be proactive and make sure that we have the resources necessary to take care of our people and to launch our new programs.
Once again, we start registering so early, earlier than anyone else in the state, I would dare say, and it does make it very difficult to go ahead and set tuition at this time, but it's necessary in order for us to get everyone registered in their classes.
I've heard Representative King say he's in favor of expanding the sales tax base. Is there any indication, if you do expand the sales tax base, where this extra money's gonna be going?
I guess-
Will it go to public education or community colleges? I mean, I wrote, I wrote Representative King a letter a year ago, and I told him that it bothers me that the community colleges that are operating efficiently, such as Weatherford College, to me, those community colleges should be rewarded with additional funds rather than taking a percentage, and it's just not fair to reward negative behavior. And if you've got community colleges that are not being efficient, why should they get as much money? Shouldn't they be encouraged to become more efficient? Now, I don't, I know I'm speaking, I don't know the situation in all of the different community colleges, but you and I both know that Houston, San Antonio, Austin, Dallas, Tarrant have incredibly large tax bases. But some of those, I told him, I said, you know, Phil, you and I have been friends for a long time, and I said, I think I know your fiscal approach is, is one of a conservative. But if you're truly a conservative, you need to reward positive behavior and not negative behavior. And I haven't heard from him, but I feel very strongly about that, that you should take those, the ones that are doing a good job, and let them get more.
Amen. And is there a, and a cost, a cost-effective index applied to community colleges that we know of? That is to say, some, that'd be pretty subjective, I understand, but some way of comparing the programs, the success of students, et cetera, and comparing that to the cost per hour of credit, like some cost-effective index, is there such a thing?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, we look at comparisons all the time and student success, growth, different things like that, and where we stand there. I look at the monies that some of these colleges had to attack their student success and discarded pathways, and it's astounding how much more they have to work with than we do.
That's what I was gonna say.
We're having to cut back in some of our hirings now when we need more people in advising and different places in order to fulfill these needs. So, you know, it's very difficult to- So, you know, it's very difficult to compare us to the larger colleges. Dr. Farmer, you may be able to.
I will, I agree with what she said, but in a ray of hope to both of your points, there's strong support, that I have seen broad, strong support for outcomes-based funding. And there is, with the new funding mechanism, there are success points along the way, and things like retention and completion are rewarded. So it goes to your point, Roger, and it speaks to the funding being associated with efficiency and success. And we, as an institution, in my humble view, are very well positioned to capitalize on this new funding scheme. I think that we have some exceptional people that are working collaboratively. It's going to fundamentally change the way we do some things, and we're going to have to become more student-centered and student, student-focused, student-success-oriented, even more so than we already are. But in, in the moderate term, three to five years, I think we're going to see far better-than-average gains as a result of these funding mechanism changes.
I agree.
Well, I have no negative feelings toward this report or anything like that. I think everything's positive. But I wonder about things like the business of us, the state movement to make things cheaper for students, that's wonderful. But we seem to be, we seem to be staying under state, under state averages, like the point was made down there. I'm wondering what that's costing us, just to be able to say, we've got something that's under, under the average of the state. What are we giving up to be able to say?
I can tell you, sir, forgive me for interrupting, but we're giving up a lot. We are giving up a tremendous amount. And if Senate Bill Two passes or House Bill Two passes in whatever form, it's likely that you will be hearing a recommendation next time for us to be coming to at least the state average, so that we can take care of some of those things that we have historically been giving up. The list is quite long.
Because my understanding, we kept the tuition rates so low as to promote higher volume in student registration, though that's, that's what I'm worried we would give up.
That, that is what would happen, but thanks to the brilliant efforts of Mr. Baker and team and hundred-and-nine percent efforts in philanthropy, as we raise our tuition, we now have an expanded capacity to offer scholarships to offset that and to do some things like we just did and attract a truly exceptional pianist from Booker T. Washington High School in Dallas. So the dynamic is changing, but your point is very well made. There has to be a balance, and the two need to go together.
But if those bills pass, Senate Bill, House Bill Two, too, every other college is going to face the same problems.
They are.
They will.
And they're not getting a hundred-and-nine percent increases like we are.
No, and they'll have to be raising their tuition well above ours.
Yes, they will. Yes, ma'am, they sure will.
They'll still be competitive.
We will be, I predict that we will be, with the proposed increases, this time next year, I predict we will still be significantly below the state average.
You know, I heard a statistic the other day that Texas is gaining about a thousand people per day, population-wise.
Nine people in Parker County every day.
Yeah.
Nine people.
And so, to me, that's astounding.
Yes. That's crazy.
It is. Before a call for a motion, are there any other questions or comments by anyone? This is a, all right.
I want to bring one comment.
Yes, please.
I failed to mention, I didn't do all this work by myself. We have a great tuition fee committee that gets it to the point, they start in December working. It's headed up by Rebecca Depew, the Controller at the college, and then Division Directors and Deans sit on that board, and they come to the board and recommend these, and then we go about analyzing.
Well, thank you. That's, that's important. Lots of work on this. So I'm going to ask, is, is there a motion to adopt, adopt the two thousand nineteen, twenty tuition and fee proposal that's just been discussed here? Is there such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in opposition, that's unanimous. Thank you.
You feel like the tuition statewide is going to go higher than actually what you're looking at there, right? But we're really not going to be as close as we are?
No.
I got you.
I have forgotten, are we more expensive than TCC?
We, I think we're actually a little bit more expensive than TCC.
Yes.
Because they've got the huge tax base.
You're looking at sixty-four percent of their three revenue sources comes from HAC.
Right.
Which strategically is where we want to go.
Okay, moving to number seven, consideration, possible action, cancel the Board of Trustees' general election for place one, place two, and special election for place four, which is normally scheduled for May fourth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. You pretty much said it. Because we don't have any opponents for our standing board members, we, you can cancel the election that was scheduled for May the fourth, not only the general election, but also the special election as well.
Is there such a motion?
I suppose.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Reports, number eight, RBC Capital Market Update, Julie McMillian, McMillan, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Didn't mean to quack your name.
Dr. Farmer, myself, and others have been working since fall two thousand and eighteen toward the possible construction of a new workforce building. In December, we invited Matt Bowles with RBC Capital Markets in to discuss financial strategies for financing such a building. He and his vice president have worked to advise us of a differing financial alternative for Texas junior colleges, as well as the legalities of such a partnership with outside entities. Although Matt could not be here with us today, his associate Julie McMillan, Vice President of RBC Capital Markets, will speak to us today to discuss the current market review, Weatherford College's outstanding debt summary revenue bond scenarios, and a preliminary timetable to look at for possible passage of a bond in construction. This session is for information only. We are not asking you to make any decisions today. In fact, we do not know at this point what the final square footage or cost on such a building would be. We only want to keep you advised and informed on possible financing strategies and a timetable to work from. Julie?
Do you want to hand out any hard copies?
Sure.
I have. Here. Well, thank you for having me today.
Yeah, I'll start on, can you move forward there?
Do I have control of the, or in your?
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, I am not technologically good people, so I apologize.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, ma'am.
Got it. I'll start by giving just a few market highlights, and there are, I brought several, so feel free to share, Andrew. Let me see, I'm going to start in the, so just generally, you know, right now, the economy overall is, you know, fairly volatile. There's a number of global factors that are affecting our economy, as well as some things that our Fed is doing or not doing, as they debate what the economic indicators are telling them about where we are in this kind of recovery mode. So things like our U.S. and China trade negotiations, things that are going on with Brexit, and whether or not, you know, Britain will really be able to exit the European economy are all kind of influencing our economy. So really, today, in this day and age, everything that happens around the globe, you know, circles back and impacts each other. So we're seeing that. In the upper right-hand corner, you can see what our economists are projecting will be kind of the interest rate increases, and this has really changed since the fall of eighteen, where we're really projecting some pretty significant Fed rate hikes. The Fed has slowed that down, they've backed off as economic indicators are coming in too strong in some cases, not as strong as others, and there's a great sense of trying to manage through avoiding a big inflationary hit in the economy. So you'll see that over the next couple of quarters, they really don't see a great amount of change in the Fed funds rate, and coincidentally, then, our, the municipal bond market, which really trades off of U.S. Treasuries and things, though our rates have really not increased the way that it was kind of predicted they would increase about a year ago. You'll see it better over on this one. If you look in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see a chart that compares the ten-year U.S. Treasury to a ten-year triple-A MMD, triple-A MMD, MMD is the municipal market data, and that's the index that municipal bonds are priced off of and trade off of on a daily basis. And you'll see there in that lower right-hand corner, that since the fall of eighteen, really November of eighteen, where rates really kind of began to, they were really being pushed up with things that were going on economically and in our market, they have recovered, we call it recovery, because they're lower for you all as issuers, they have really declined in the last, you know, four months. And so right now, really is a good time to be an issuer in the municipal bond market. You will see rates that are comparable to rates that, when a district sold bonds back in two thousand and seventeen, they're still along those lines. So not a great fear that rates are going to rise in the next six or eight months, next year. We really see them trading kind of in a very similar range as they are in right now. That is partially because with tax reform, the supply in our market, the amount of new issuance of municipal bonds has declined considerably. Tax reform has made it where it's not, we, we can't advance refund bonds like we used to on the municipal side, and, and also, there's some investors, there's less interest in investors in municipal bonds because the corporate tax structure changed. They don't need tax-exempt bonds the way they used to need tax-exempt bonds for expense purposes. So, so things are fairly, I mean, the day-to-day, there's a lot of volatility, but it's a fairly stable market right now, and if the district were to come to market, I think you'd find some receptivity for your bonds, and you'd be at a, at a cost structure or a price point in the market that would be attractive to you all. Skip to page five of the presentation. This is the district's outstanding debt. You all have both tax-exempt debt, which is on your general obligation side, is paid by taxes. That's the chart on your left, the outstanding GEO debt. And then you also have some revenue bonds outstanding, which are really paid by a pledge of revenues on the system, they're not paid by taxes, okay? And there's different reasons why we do those different kinds of bonds. In some cases, it's about the project you funded originally and maybe pledging a revenue stream off that project. It may have been because, you know, you didn't have general bond authorization, and there's a timing issue, and you needed the bond dollars, so we went on the revenue side rather than the GEO side. But you have debt on both sides of the house right now, is the way we'd call it, and you do not have a lot. You have ten million dollars in principal outstanding in debt right now. So compared to some of your other peers' institutions, you, you are very low in terms of leverage. Currently, the district's outstanding credit rating is an A-plus with S and P, and you'll see on the left, there's a number of criteria from the last rating that we did in two thousand and seventeen as to the strengths and weaknesses of the district. Your single-A rating is really largely a reflection of where your TAV is, unfortunately. They have, the, the, the credit rating agencies just kind of have some ballparks within which the rating levels are, and your TAV really has even that A-plus rating category, because your debt is so low, there's so many other factors that are really credit-positive for you all, that it is largely a factor of your tax base. I wouldn't expect that to change, although it's possible that we would get into that double-A minus category, and this is on your GEO debt. It's possible that, given the recent increases in your tax base and things, that you'd be kind of closer to that category these days than you were two years ago, so. Dr. Farmer and Dr. Cantrell asked us to speak kind of specifically about revenue bonds, because that's the credit that you all are kind of considering as you look at this new workforce facility. So a revenue bond, much like a GEO bond, is issued with, you know, a ten, twenty, thirty-year structure, with serial principal payments, there's really not much, there's no difference really in structure or those kinds of things. It's really about the security behind the bond. GEO bonds are backed by your tax, your limited taxability, and revenue bonds are backed or they're secured by a pledge of, a combined pledge of a amount of your tuition revenue and other revenues of the college. So federal, you know, monies or auxiliary monies, those kinds of things, bookstore monies, it's a combined pledge of the revenues of the system, okay? Revenue bonds can be issued for construction, improvement, renovation, all the same thing, really most of the same things that general obligation bonds can be sold for. You do not need voter approval to do a revenue bond transaction, so it's not something you have to go up for an election for. You can sell revenue bonds to refund revenue bonds. Let's see, the benefits of using a revenue bond is that it, you know, it allows you to do capital improvements that could be financed, you know, can be financed kind of against the revenues of that facility, per se, right? It also allows you to sell the bonds without having to go in front of an election. So from a timing perspective, if you have a project that needs to get done, you don't have to take the same amount of time that you have to do with a typical general obligation authorization, which requires, you know, education of your constituency and voting and all those things. So there is some, some flexibility that I would say is what revenue bonds really allow you to do. And what we have next are really a couple of scenarios around what it would look like if the district were to sell six million dollars in revenue bonds sometime this summer. And what we've done is, we've looked at structuring those revenue bonds over twenty years, twenty-five years, or thirty years. And that really comes down to a philosophical discussion that you all would need to have about, you know, how fast you want to repay those bonds, the annual cost of that, how long, you know, you want to pair that financing with the useful life of the asset, those kinds of things. You have the flexibility to do any of those scenarios, you could even structure it shorter. Obviously, the shorter you go, the more expensive it becomes on an annual basis. So you'll see here, and I won't go through all these details, but on each page of the next three pages, we show you some summary information about what it looks like to sell the bonds under those three scenarios, a twenty-year, twenty-five, and a thirty-year. And really, on this last page, we summarize kind of a debt service comparison. So on an annual basis, what would this require of the college from a funding perspective? And you'll see that for all three of the scenarios, if you were to generate six million dollars in capital project fund revenue for you all to build this building, there's a slightly different, you know, annual debt service requirement is what we call it. And you'll see the twenty-year debt service requirement is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The twenty-five-year drops down to just about four hundred and five thousand dollars a year, and then the twenty-five-year drops down to about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Part of why those aren't quite like just exactly the same changes is that as you go out longer in the yield curve, the bonds become more expensive. So a bond that we sell at thirty years has a higher yield or higher coupon on it than the bond we sell at twenty years. So it does get more expensive to go out longer, but it allows you to manage your annual debt service, you know, obligation maybe in a range that fits more with what the college can do. Any, any thoughts or questions on those numbers? Yes?
No, not on the numbers, on the, on the various revenue sources that can be combined. What, what are we talking about there?
So you're limited to a twenty-five percent of your tuition revenue, that's a state limitation. So you, you can look at the tuition revenue, and then we kind of take twenty-five percent of that, and that can be pledged toward the bonds from a security perspective. Other revenue of the, of the system, so bookstore revenue, athletic ticket sale revenue, trying to think, what else do we have in your revenue system? Cafeteria services, those things all kind of get rolled up together to create a revenue base that we then say is pledged as security against the bonds. And the idea is that you have two or three times the revenue, right, of your, of the debt service. Kind of good requirements would be to have at least one, one point two-five percent revenue coverage, but we have higher revenue coverage than that right now on the district's outstanding revenue bonds.
What kind of revenue would be generated from the facility, you think?
Well, Mr. Curley will speak to the details of that in a little bit, but we ballpark-ish have an agreement, rough agreement, for about half a million dollars for build-out and then approximately eighteen dollars a square foot for a ten-year lease. And the- And the total amount would depend on the amount of square footage leased. That's approximately 9,400 square feet at the current time. And there's also the possibility of a second tenant that we'll discuss a little bit later with another revenue stream.
Commenced the work on in the summer of 2019, bonds issued during the summer.
Right. And that's just us kind of assuming right now that that would be the timetable. It might not happen till the fall if you all don't, aren't ready in terms of your architectural planning and your negotiation with some of these outside entities and things. So, I just have to make an assumption when I start running the numbers. So, we just assume sometime this summer.
Okay, sure.
And you can actually see that on the last page. You'll see a timetable. This is really more to kind of give you a sense of how, I won't say how long, but how long it takes us to kind of go from you say yes, move forward. When do we sell bonds? It can't happen like tomorrow, right? It's really about an eight to 12-week period for us to kind of pull the documents together, get a reading on those documents, work with an underwriter, get the information out into the market, price the bonds. And we have to do all that and work around you all approving those at a board meeting. So, right now, what we would say is, if everything were finalized and you were like, yes, we're going to do this, possibly we could be selling the bonds in June and providing you the money in July.
Yeah. I see your timeline. That's very helpful.
Right. That's more, that's nothing that we have, no one has told us those are the dates you want. That was more to lay out.
It's good, though, just to have it in general and some targets there. That's great.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions about this? It's a lot of information. Thank you for this. This is really helpful.
Absolutely. Oh, yes, thank you. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Doc, you got anything?
No, sir. Please just be cheeky. I don't have any questions. But some of the economic data in terms of core inflation, unemployment, and Fed funds, it is subjective to the people that are leading the economic.
Yeah, most definitely. And those are really, actually, RBC has a group of economists that are our research team. They operate out of our New York office, and those are their economic projections about where core inflation will be or where GDP will be. Those are not anything coming from the federal government, so.
Whoever's trying to predict right now has all of the sympathy I can follow.
They do not have an easy job.
Because it's a very volatile situation economically in the world.
It is.
With China, with Brexit, and et cetera, so. Thank you.
Anything else for Ms. McMillan? Thank you. We'll move to the, if it's okay, we'll just, oh, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Demand study update, Mr. Indy?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
Okay. Just a second, I got to switch. I'm a little bit very distracted, so you're going to have to do that. Man study update. I got the next three presentations. So, the first thing I'm going to try to do is keep this short. I talk fast, so a few questions asked, okay? First, we're going to start with the demand study, and I put the guided pathways update in the same presentation. You'll see when we hit it where we're changing gears, okay? So, first with our demand study update. We're going to start with our workforce demand and student interest surveys. For our student interest surveys, they'll be distributed next week. We're planning on getting them out on the 25th to area counselors and dual-credit instructors to share with their students. That'll go out through an email blast to those folks. It includes now an interest question on organizational leadership degree. That's something we recently added to it, and we hope to start getting responses back to that, and we'll begin talking to you about it in April as we get those responses. Jeanetta Cruz is here to talk to us about our workforce employer demand surveys and interviews. They've been sharing data from employer needs surveys and interviews that we conducted today. It's all yours.
I just have a brief update for you on the demand study and the business surveys we've been working on. We've only had about three weeks since we last saw you, so we've had spring break in there. But we have sent out our first sampling of our business surveys electronically. We sent out about 120 surveys, and we got back 25. That's a 21% return rate so far. That's kind of what we expected. But what we're doing, and we knew we would need to do this, was follow up with them individually. The ones that did submit, we've been contacting them to discuss. And then ones that did not submit yet, we are going through the list and contacting those as well, as we have time to. If you remember, I had over 300 and someone on the list, so we chose to do a third of them in this first go-around. And then, as we contacted those and felt comfortable with those results, then go to the next, to make sure that we could actually sufficiently get back in contact with them in a timely manner. So, out of those that we did receive back, 13 of them, which was 52%, were Parker County businesses, 32% were Wise County, and 4% were Palopinto. We did have a few out of our service area that lumped into about 12% that were in Tarrant and from the governor's meeting is where some of those came from. We had quite a few different representatives come to that. Out of the types of businesses, 36 were manufacturing and industrial, 28% were healthcare, 28% were service, and 8% were retail. 64% were considered small businesses, meaning that they had less than 100 employees, and 24% were medium to large, over 100 employees, with one of them being over 1,000 employees. Their main interest, as we go through the areas that we ask them about, 60% were interested in workplace communication, 44% in leadership training, 40% in professionalism in the workplace, and 16% in account management. They preferred face-to-face 52% of the time, and 48% of the time, they wanted the training on their site. For, we did ask them about the organizational leadership bachelor degree to determine some interest and start a demand study for that. It's, we're very early on, which we only had 25 surveys. 48% did say that it was a need. We had 16% that were neutral, 16% that said it was not needed, and 20% didn't answer the question. Many of the companies listed the need for customer relations, customer service, and professional work ethic. I'm not sure how we teach ethic to everyone, but we're going to try. As well as technical skills such as pop fitting, blueprint reading, computer networking, and computer aided drafting. We'll continue to survey those businesses and continue to contact them to get more results and more feedback. Now, what you really may want to know is what some action items that we've done as a result of these surveys and the contacts that we've been making. Already, we have scheduled a FEMA truck driving class in Wise County to begin June 17th through July 12th, and determining dates and feasibility of an additional truck driving course in Wise County this summer. I should have those dates probably in the next couple of weeks of when that will happen. We did meet with an advanced manufacturing company, in fact, this morning, in Parker County, to discuss the training needs and opportunity for a skills grant for them. We attended and presented at the governor's small business workshop in Weatherford this month. We held both of our advisory meetings, one in Weatherford on March 5th, one in Wise County on March 7th. And in April, we're going to meet with two of the companies that attended our Wise County advisory meeting to discuss skills training and grant opportunities in lean manufacturing, logistics, and welding. We are continuing to work on a business summit in Wise County that looks like it will be with, the governor's office actually hosting it with us as a partner, and that is scheduled. The governor's office chose October as our target month for that, to make sure we have plenty of time to develop that appropriately. And then one thing I mentioned to you last time was our corporate college kickoff, and we've actually moved that from April to May due to some conflicts within the community that we did not want to compete with. So, our kickoff is going to be May 22nd. It's a breakfast in Texas Hall, and we hope to have a ribbon cutting with the Weatherford Chamber with that, and then a presentation of the type of training that we'll be offering for you to attend and all of our businesses to attend. So, we're doing a big launch and big push to try to get as many business people there to our launch, and that's May 22nd. And we'll bring you formal invitations, but would love for you to attend that if your schedule allows. And then our graduation ceremonies for workforce programs are coming up. This is a busy time in spring with all kinds of graduations, but our EMT and FIRE Academy will graduate May 11th at 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock. And then our workforce graduation for spring graduates will be June 4th in Weatherford and June 6th in Wise County. Both of those are at 6:00 o'clock. You're always welcome to attend our graduations. That's what, that's what we do while we do, while we do what we do at those graduations, to see the success of those students. So, I'd love to have you with those. That highlights some of the many workforce initiatives going on right now, and it concludes my report. Thank you for your time.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Cruz?
It's busy.
One time, we had a contract with the trucking company to train all of their drivers. What was that?
We currently do have several contracts with companies. We have a big one with Halliburton, Python, we do Kegwin O'Neill, and then FEMA typically sends one to us about every six to eight months.
So, we had the one company that we contracted with to do our teaching for us years ago, Texas, I forgot, TAI.
Yeah, it is.
But we found it was better to do our own school.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
She did a great job standing in for you guys today at the Chamber.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jeanetta.
Mr. Indy, guided pathways.
We're going to get back to that. First, we're going to tell you about some other things that are going on. Workforce is really important to us, and we want to keep focusing on specific workforce opportunities, but we don't lose track of the fact that seven out of 10 students at Weatherford College are taking general education courses, that one in three is taking a dual-credit course, and basically, one in three is online. So, we're working on right now with our research and our interim associate dean of enrollment management, we're working on creating a predictive model for course scheduling at Weatherford College. We used our methodology to look at the fall 2017, 2018, came up with some results. This information, Teresa has it, it'll be available to you if you want to look at it in more detail, and if you want to discuss it at any point, we'd be glad to bring that forward. I just want to hit some highlights. When we look at fall '17 and '18, we identify several early-filling courses. That means before we go to, from pre-registration to open registration for all students, we're filling biology and geology and sociology and English courses selectively. So, we're looking at that and saying, well, English 1302, we got lots of sections of that. Why is a section filling when it's filling? What does it tell us about our process when a course fills that early on? Then, we identify within 30 days, and a peculiar government 2305 that filled at 12 students and then didn't get any more students for the remainder of the semester after the pre-enrollment periods. We're going to look at things like that for anomalies. Within 30 days, 48 courses or 21% of all the course sections filled across the core. That means it wasn't in any specific area. Hyatt, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, 9:30, 11:00, and 12:30. If you've been here a while, that's pretty predictable. So, it didn't tell us a lot. But as we go to 60 days out, we see a heavy demand on Tuesday, Thursday, 11:00, and Monday, Wednesday at 9:30, slightly less. We expect the tracking at 9:30 and 11:00 to be consistent, but it isn't, and that's telling us students are beginning to diverge from the core. If that is because they're taking majors courses, that's interesting, but what if, what if it means that they're actually just skipping a period? Maybe they don't want back-to-back classes, and that's what we want our data to start telling us. How are students traveling? Where do they want those classes? How do we fill them efficiently? By the first day of class, we also see that there was limited opportunities enrollment. So, if we had classes that you could only take once, at 8:00 AM, they filled. But if we put them later in the day, they might not fill as often. At 12:30, we see multiple opportunity classes filling within 60 days of enrollment starting, which means those classes at 12:30 are more popular than a lot of people believe them to be. So, we need to look at 12:30 on our schedule and how many classes we're offering and what we're offering at that time. By the first day of class, 49% of all face-to-face courses at the Weatherford campus are filled. That's a pretty good rate. When we look at the campus, this campus, it's dropping by 3% to 5% per year over a period of about five to six years. So, we need to know what's going on here in terms of our student population, where they're going, and how we can bring them back to face-to-face offerings. We see that 26 or 12% stopped enrolling within, with an enrollment number of 10 or more away from their maximum enrollment at least 63 days from the first day of class. That means courses that were on the books and had open seats in the core curriculum didn't generate student enrollments for two months prior to the course actually starting. That indicates to us perhaps inefficiency in our course offerings. What did we offer that students enrolled for in July and didn't enroll at all, or late June and didn't enroll in August, July or August for that course? We're going to use this data to start looking at how we can affect our scheduling more efficiently. Our next places to look will be online courses and branch campuses, of course. We're going to look at course enrollment patterns for partially-filled courses. What's going on when they're partially filled? Is it time of day? Is it the type of class? Is the sequence of classes? Is it instructor preference? We want to look at that. It's also modality, and we're going to start looking at non-core. We'll also use our survey of student scheduling choices in fall 2019, using the baseline tool that you've been gracious enough to allow us to purchase through Compliance Assist Campus Labs, I'm sorry, Campus Labs. And that will indicate what our student satisfaction is with their current classes. That's courses, time of day, day, instructor, modality, and their desire for the future. And all of this is so that we can develop a predictable model for course offerings, first in our face-to-face classes at the Weatherford campus, and then extending outward. The assumption has been that students want online courses, and we've been moving that way for about a decade. But data that we're looking at from other, and reports we're getting, tell us that students are wanting more face-to-face classes, but they don't mean all of them, and they don't mean it all at any time of the day. So, we're going to have to get very scientific about what we add to our schedule, when we add it, and when we take courses off, because they're not going to be efficient. So, this is part of our demand study work, and it is, it's data-based, and we're going to continue that. Along this line, we'd like to discuss with you program gap analysis. We're not asking for you to do anything. We're giving this as an example. There's a company called EMSI that provides program review services for gap analysis. Those are one-off studies of what you're doing in terms of your offerings versus what's in the market. We'd like to look at that in the future so that we can look at what we're offering, what we could be offering, what employers say they need, and how well our students who are graduating are filling demands in the marketplace. What an outside vendor provides that we might want to consider is that they bring an objective outside perspective rather than one generated in-house where potential biases could influence our results, and the access to their proprietarily exclusive data sources that we don't have. Lee's really good at finding us data. Dwayne Berry's wonderful at helping him, but two guys working on this problem probably isn't going to get us everywhere we want to go. And as we talk about these issues in gap studies, we may want to talk about an outside view of this. Now, we're going to talk about guided pathways. Dr. Cantrell?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll update you on where we are.
Okay. Any questions on the demand study? Yes, sir?
What is, what is our percentage of workforce versus academic students? I don't mean to ask a difficult question.
That's okay. It's not a difficult question. The number has consistently, over a period of up to 20 years, been around 60% to 70% are engaged in general education courses. But that number can be slightly misleading, Roger, because students who are taking allied health programs, for example, have a general education course load that is required before they get into the health science-specific areas. So, I would say you're closer to 60/40 than you are 70/30. That doesn't include a variety of students who are taking CE offerings, there's a non-credit hour, continuing education offerings, that are not counted in that general population. And that would include things like our police academy, our FIRE academy, our CNA RNA, CNA medical assisting and dental assisting programs. So, the body is bigger than just the 6,000 students, but the breakdown has been, for some time, lots of general education and a rising number of workforce. Have I answered your question?
Yeah, that does. I totally understand how some of them bleed over into the other.
They do.
You know, I just happen to, I drive down the highway, and I see these Halliburton trucks, and they're, they look incredibly complicated pieces of machinery. And I just wonder, is there any way, and this may be a dumb question, but is there any way we could work with Halliburton to get some of that equipment to use in training people to work on that equipment?
We would love to look into it. We would love to look into a diesel mechanic training program. They're expensive to start, and we have to have physical space to put them in, but it's certainly one of the things we want to look at as we look at automotive mechanic. We've also discussed airframe mechanic or engine, air engines and airframes. Again, expensive to start, expensive to run, and we want to make sure the marketplace will bear it out. And that's why we want to look at something like EMSI's opportunity studies, gap studies to see, is Tarrant County already filling that need? Are we going to be able to place these people into jobs? Will the jobs pay them significantly to make the education worthwhile?
So is this workforce building going to be doing any of that?
Probably not what you've described with the Halliburton, but we are laser-focused on the more technical aspects of mechanics, the electronics, anything that we can link to potentially robotics, engineering, coding, computer software, computer science, that, things of that nature, the more technical aspects. And we've been, we've targeted some potential donors that may or may not have an interest in helping us fund that particular endeavor. But it's something we're exploring and we're interested in, just a funding challenge at this point.
Yeah, I understand.
EMSI, about how many people, how many other institutions, learning institutions are using it?
I wouldn't want to guess by percentage. I know that when we go out and talk professionally, among my peers as chief academic officers, and I hear about what they're doing, when Dr. Farmer says to you that there's a cost to not reaching the median for tuition and fees and keeping our tax rate low, that's the answer. We do what we can do, but you need extra money to pay those outside companies. And some of our peer institutions, I'm not going to name names, have that money available, and they are ahead of us in terms of doing the research. And what we typically do is look at what they're doing and see if we can catch on or fill in blanks where they're not avail, where they're not already working.
All right, guided pathways.
Were there more questions on this issue?
Just for clarification, the colleges who use EMSIs as a service range from Houston Community College to Colorado Community College.
All right.
I had one follow-up on your earlier. We're looking at online and in-class, face-to-face. We're also keeping careful success rates on both, aren't we?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
We've done, okay.
We are. We're looking at student performance data. This look is that we are concerned that we are losing a lot of students from this campus and from our branch campuses where they are more flat. This campus tends to lose students. So we want to know what's happening, why it's happening, and what we can do to recover. And so that was why it was our first target as we looked at this predictive modeling scheme. No, we are definitely looking at student performance as well. It does no good to get them into the classes and then they don't succeed, but are, we are looking at the data, especially in dual-credit and online learning.
Thank you.
Dr. Mallett, did you have a question as well?
Just a comment, the CAD, you mentioned CAD a while ago on that list. I'm sure you're aware of it, that all of this program that produces CAD gives free packages of AutoCAD to students and instructors.
We have an AutoCAD lab here on this campus. We still have one in the Middle Wells Education Center, and we are talking about how to make better use of that facility and approximate it to our CNC cutting machines. And you've been interested in the past, we've discussed artificial intelligence. We're looking into that with several industry partners. In fact, I think Hayden Harbaugh is looking pretty aggressively to see who's using AI currently in our region as employers and what kind of training they may need of us. And we may have something for you about that as well. Sorry, this is taking me a little longer. Are there other questions?
That's okay.
All right. Let me get on to with guided pathways then. There's some things we're doing in guided pathways. We want to know that guided pathways is doing something. They're not just meetings where we talk about getting better. Here's some things we're doing. In testing, we've begun to implement Register Blast, which is a 24/7 testing scheduling service, 103 registrations from February through mid-March. We've extended testing hours. Student satisfaction was at 95%, which isn't bad. Lila's group did a pretty good job over there, but it's at 98% now. And the testing center personnel now enter TSI scores into our ERP, saving students a trip they used to have to walk the scores down the hill, didn't they? We don't do that anymore. Simple mechanics, just better use of our personnel, better use of our time, and better use of equipment. Register Blast is not a hugely expensive program, but it makes a huge difference when a student doesn't have to call the testing center to set up the appointment. They can do it online 24/7. Academic Support Center, student evaluations of tutors and services for the first semester of this year yielded no needs, pardon the spelling area, improved responses overall, so nothing was weak, and an overall rating of excellence of 96%. In our math program, we talked to you last time about the core requisites, I'm not going to cover that again, in the math 001 level, that's ADE, that's eighth grade or lower level coming into the college, we shifted that to WISD as our community education partner. Becky Nelson runs that for us, and they teach on our campus. We're seeing fewer students enrolling. That's not a bad thing. It means they're getting into the college pre-math level courses, the 0332 and the 0314 more often, and we told you about their success, but students who are coming here are having better success. The prior three years, the average rate was 37% of all students are in C or better. This year it's 51%. So that's a pretty sizable increase. The spring 2019 core requisite, this is new data from math up to the midsemester, to date, 120 students have completed math 0332, 86 are at C or better, 112 are continuing into math 1332. If you don't know this, the core requisite model allows them to continue even if they were substandard at the end of the developmental course, because they're doing them in sequence and rapid sequence, and the hope is that if they can score D or better in the college-level course, they're still college complete in mathematics. So that's why more students are continuing on than scored a C or better in the 112, in the 0332. 72% are now TSI complete. The performance approximate the levels we achieved in fall 2018 cohort. Advising series, our advisors are meeting with our departments. The departments come in and sit and talk about what it is to be faculty at this college, their teaching pedagogy styles, their methodologies, what they do with students in terms of office hours, availability, online stuff. Advisors ask them questions and provide information about what advising is like. It's a good dialogue, and it's increasing the quality of the work that we're doing. I've got some quotes there you can read from people about, we've never had meetings like this before. We hope they continue. They're very helpful. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have some face-to-face time with the departments. It's given me a chance to meet some new people I didn't know before, put some names with faces. And I think the most important thing, when we sit down together, we think we know all the information presented to us to students is not complete. This doesn't mean students lie to us. It means it's an incomplete picture when we talk to students, whether we're faculty or advisors. When we talk to each other, we start to form more complete pictures of what's going on with the students and what the needs are, and that helps us to work better with the students, which is what Pathways is about. Looking forward, we'll host the CLARA, that's the Regional Leadership Conference, on April 5th. We will be attending the Making Connections in Adult Education Community College Partnerships meetings with Becky Nelson from WISD on April 12th. I'll be going to do that with Adam Finley and Shantel? Are you coming with who? Jeanette is going, sorry. I lose track of people. So we're going to that, and then the Pathways Institute, which is ensuring student learning. With 14 people from the college are going, Dr. Farmer, Dr. Cantrell, we've got three faculty members, advisors.
Seven new faces this time.
Lots of new people, and we'll be having the chief academic officer's second meeting during the Pathways Institute. And then on May 20th through the 22nd, we'll be going to a Culture of Caring Summit at Amarillo College. They've been leading the way on the Culture of Caring initiative. This summit is about the culture of caring, so we're taking a three-person team. You are going to that. You are. So we're going to go do that. That's everything in Pathways.
Okay.
Question? Sure.
Do, do we look on these math scores, I think, congratulations, that's fantastic. Do we ever try to look back at their high school counselor to see where they were lacking on their math scores to see if that can help us direct?
We do. The alignment process has been going on for more than a decade now. The difficulty of alignment is that when you start pointing backwards that way, you have to be tremendously sensitive to the particular institutions where these students are coming from, because as you start to look through that data, you move very quickly from trying to solve a problem to people feeling the need to defend what the work that they've done. And as you know, high schools have been under attack for a long time for the quality of the work that they're doing, and they're doing the best that they can. And so we want to look at the individual students and be very careful about what's this student's issue? How did it arise to become this problem? What did it do in terms of performance? What's helping more is that the core requisite model is identifying areas of weakness, focusing students on it, and saying, look, we know you have a difficult time with this, let's learn it now. And it's working.
Well, I hope we never get to the point that we start looking for blame.
No.
And that we can say, okay, we know this student does well in this particular type of math problem. Sometimes in a math situation, it's a reading problem.
I've never seen a student helped by blaming anyone.
No.
Including the student.
And we don't need to blame anyone, and I probably should look in the mirror sometimes, but I, I, I know what you're saying, and I hope we don't approach it from, well, you didn't do this, but I hope we approach it from the standpoint of what can we do to help this person improve in that particular area?
We do it generally with the counselors through meetings that we have with them, and when we encounter specific student problems or students encountering specific challenges, that tends to be faculty working with a counselor here, and if we can make that connection back to an earlier educator, we do that. But it's often the faculty member with a counselor here and tutors and other faculty peers working on what is the student's issue now? How do we figure out how to, how to resolve it?
Is part of guided pathways going back to talk to the high school counselor?
It is.
Okay.
It is, and it's part of what we're doing. The two areas where we're doing that, obviously dual-credit, but also the high schools are now more heavily invested in what they're calling college prep courses, which we're partnering with them to do that. And so we are having a better dialogue, especially now that they can count the college-based, college prep courses for their completion points.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Feels like it's about 50 degrees.
It's freezing. It's cold.
Oh.
It's a little bit sten for me. You know. I saw you fix that earlier. It's your fault. It's usually the opposite.
Just saying, just saying. All right.
I'm breathing a lot of hot air, and you're still cold. So we're going to talk now about numbers with heart, and we're going to bring you one of these every board meeting, things that we're doing that actually affect students. And today, we're going to talk about Spring Forward, which is that dual-credit pilot program that we're doing with Springtown ISD. Brittany Chavez and I presented on this at Region 11 in February very successfully. A lot of people were surprised to hear that if you work with your ISD and your community college partner toward reducing the cost of education towards students and not toward other agendas we might have, you can do some really great things. And Brittany's responsible for a lot of this work, as is Dr. Locke, for putting this together. Here's what we were doing. Brittany came to us and said, we can get courses at $150 apiece from another institution. They provide it online. We don't want our students taking online classes for everything they do, especially from an institution pretty far away. We'd really rather work with you, but we can't afford to pay what you're charging. And I said, well, we can't afford to pay your faculty what it costs us. So you figure out how we can pay less for faculty, and we can figure out how to pay less, get the students to pay less for courses. And she said, we're in. So our requirements, develop a plan for increasing the number and variety of courses offered at Springtown ISD, increasing student success, especially among the underrepresented populations. Those are the poor kids. Those are the, that's the ethnic diversity. That's the first-generation students. The courses had to serve a variety of degrees and certificates. The modalities had to be realistic and accessible. You can't do everything online for these kids. The design had to be financially responsible, reduce tuition and fees for the students, and textbook costs, which are huge for our students now. Enrollment numbers had to make sense for both entities. They had to be able to put a reasonable number in classes. We had to be able to get a high enough number that we could pay for it. Overall program design had to achieve revenue neutrality. To do that, we had to have a robust advising partnership. The courses have to make sense. They have to serve students in large numbers, and they have to lead toward degree completions, not only ours, but Baccalaureate degrees. Sometimes we're doing workforce programs over there, but this is largely Baccalaureate degrees. Our MOU requires these things. Classes have to meet a minimum headcount. No less than 60% of the courses are taught by embedded faculty. That means they're high school teachers with master's degrees. We provide faculty to meet the district's needs when they can't provide, so it isn't, if you don't have it, we're not doing it. Dr. Marcelo Wilcham is going out there and teaching Spanish right now and doing a wonderful job, and they love him. Weatherford College compensates Springtown ISD for the services of embedded faculty members at the rate of $250 per load unit. That means that instead of roughly $2,000 per course for a three-credit hour course, these courses are costing $750. These are for full-time faculty members who are paid at the ISD already, and this is in addition to their regular paycheck. If we send in adjunct or a full-time faculty member, we pay at our full rate. Springtown ISD dual-credit students pay $30 an hour. So what is a $255 course by our normal in-district fee for the dual-credit student at Springtown ISD is $90? That's all students. We do not have a free and reduced lunch rate, because this gets close enough to it to make it work. So those students aren't differentiated, which was a thing that eliminated them from taking classes. They didn't want to be identified as the poor kids getting the cheap classes. What did it do? You can see that in the first year that we began this program, there were 74 students, and 63 of them were seniors. There were only five disciplines. We had non-success in two courses out of that, that small body that we had. We generated 37,000 in tuition and 22,000, 22,000 in instructional expenses. That doesn't include our contact hour funding. The second year, you see that we have a lot more completed hours, although there are actually fewer students. We're generating about the same amount of money. We're about $4,000 lower in tuition, but we're about $2,000 higher in instructional expenses. But all those additional completed hours means that we're generating contact hour funding and success. Year three, that's this year, we have 109 students, that's a 47% increase, completing 1,022 credit hours, that's a 60% increase, nine semester credit hour average, 11 disciplines are now being taught. We've seen consistent student success rates. We're generating $30,000, that's $7,000 less in tuition, 24,000 in instructional expenses. That's flat from last year, but the contact hour funding is going up, and as you see at the top in yellow, nine current seniors will graduate with associate degrees as they graduate with high school diplomas. That's the largest group of graduates from any high school we've had, even if you totaled all their graduates together over the years.
Wow, that's incredible.
That is fantastic.
That's really impressive.
So next step, moving forward, we're going to increase degree completion by focusing on the students who are underserved, and Brittany's a fantastic partner in working on that. We're working on a college prep to college-level completion collaboration. There's actually a state rule that doesn't allow us to work with the college prep students as college-level work until they completed high school, and we're working with the state to see if we can get through that, because the core requisite model they're mandating, we can't use in high school. But once we pointed that out, they tried to help us to figure out how to get around it. That means we're in front of the state on this one. They didn't realize they passed a rule that made it impossible for us to do what they asked us to do with high school students in dual-credit, but they're figuring it out. We're going to strengthen partnerships that help our students succeed, create an instructional and student service collaboration to open doors for the underserved. But we have to have contact hour funding to do this. You realize this model breaks without contact hour funding, and we have other districts now asking if they could do the same thing, and it has to be financially sustainable. Those are numbers with heart. Any questions?
Good job, Mr. Indy. Thank you. Moving to number nine on the agenda, future agenda items or meetings. President Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next month, we will be bringing to the Board of Trustees Budget Amendment Number Three. Coupled with that will be a recommendation consideration for possible approval to reallocate funds from a defunct newspaper account towards the fine arts. So we'll bring that to you in advance for your consideration and potential approval.
Anything else? Go ahead.
No, go ahead, DeNish.
Please. I'm sorry?
Yeah, I was gonna, I didn't, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Oh, you're done. I would like to bring up something, if it's in appropriate time. I'd like, discussing future agenda items.
Sure.
If it's possible, I'd like to request, moving forward, regarding the Vet Tech program, I would like a summary of accomplishments to date. I would like the listings of submissions for credentialing, the obstacles that we're looking at, and the discussions and communications we've had with the city of Weatherford to date.
Yeah.
I would like a timeline, an anticipated timeline. This, also, moving forward every month, I would like a monthly progress report. I would like to note the obstacles, you know, the upcoming competitions from other schools that are about to start this program, if our timeline's going to put us at jeopardy with these schools starting this program. I would also like to see, before the end of April, if possible, and this is all respectfully requested, I would like to see a workshop between Weatherford College Board of Trustees, faculty members who are interested, and the city of Weatherford interested parties with this program. I'd like to have a workshop, so we're all on the same page, if that's at all possible.
Can we do that?
Absolutely.
You bet we can.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. All right. Any other requests concerning future, future agenda items? Okay. We'll move to announcements. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. You've seen your packet, a long list of upcoming activities. This is probably our busiest time of the year regarding these types of activities, plus our sesquicentennial. Lots of events coming up. I'm going to just hit some high points here. And this coming Friday, we have our Coyote Jazz Fest. We have high schools from all over the area coming to participate. And then our band is playing in a concert at 7:30 on Friday night. Of course, it's all free. We do have our family picnic scheduled for this coming Saturday. I understand there's some discussion about the weather, and so they may end up pushing that back. We'll let you guys know if that is pushed back. We have a Philosophy of Religion and Art Conference, March 29th and 30th here. Of course, lots of baseball and softball games throughout this schedule. On April the 5th, Dwayne DuRette and Friends, It's All About the Music concert down at the Alkec. It's a 90-minute drum solo, I understand. No, I'm just kidding. It's not a drum solo. Dwayne is bringing some friends to play with him that day. So that'll be a great concert that night. Now, before that, on April the 5th, we're having a retiree reception to celebrate our sesquicentennial. All the retirees from Weatherford College past are going to join us, and they're excited about that event. We'll give you the details on that. Well, it's 5 o'clock in the Alkec, Texas Hall, that day, April the 5th. April the 12th, the following Friday, our annual Alumni Awards Luncheon. You may have seen the media release that Crystal put out yesterday, that Mr. John Vandergriff has been voted our alumnus of the year. Dr. Molly Harris and Keith Loftus will be our distinguished alumni recipients, and they'll be honored that day. We'd love to have you all there.
That's cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to call a halt for the, you got something?
Well, just, did you want to mention the resident musician?
The Wise County?
Yes.
Is Dwayne here? Dwayne knows more about that than I do. I understand that tonight, they're presenting a recognition to a musician in the Wise County campus.
Yeah, Weatherford College is awarding this person with a, what's the term, resident?
Artist in residence.
Artist in residence. Resident, it's easy to use.
Okay.
Tonight.
Who is that?
That's a lady that won national, the national first place in violin. She is a graduate student now at North Texas. She teaches in the Weatherford College building there, teaches string instruments.